So, welcome everyone to the hearing on the Department of Technology. First, I want to thank you all for taking the time to be here. Councilmember Mitch Brown for joining us for this hearing. I'll start with some opening remarks and then look forward to the presentation by the department. And thank you all for taking the time to educate us. Good afternoon. I want to thank everyone, including the interim Department of Technology Director Sheri Kish, who unfortunately cannot be here today, for your participation in this hearing. Other staff members from the Department of Technology are here to present helpful information and will be led by our Assistant Director, Tom Diamond. I would also like to thank members of the public for taking the time to come down to City Hall to learn more about how our city's Department of Technology keeps Columbus up and running. I'd also like to remind those members of the public that wants to testify to please fill out a speaker slip and after the presentation we'll have a public testimony portion of the hearing. Today, we will hear about what the Department of Technology provides the residents and visitors of Columbus. As a new member of council, what everyone always asks is, "What are you chairing? What does that department do?" And so, really appreciate the Department of Technology taking the time to share some of that, "What do we do?" We'll learn useful information about Columbus TV, otherwise known as CTV, emerging applications, the columbus.gov website, Green Spot Columbus, the My Columbus app, which, if you haven't downloaded yet, you should do that either while watching this hearing or in your leisure, 3-1-1, geographic information systems, network data security, and the Columbus Fiber Network. The information presented today will illustrate the city of Columbus's strong leadership from the Department of Technology that promotes effectiveness and opportunity. This hearing is publicly, is public and will be available on the columbus.gov YouTube channel, which is also currently streaming live online on the CTV website and broadcasting on Time Warner and WOW on Channel 3 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. I don't know if my colleague has any opening remarks or comments? Seeing none, I will now turn over the presentation to Assistant Director Tom Diamond. Again, thank you all for being here. Tom, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Stenziano, and thank you, Councilmember Brown, for inviting us here today. On behalf of Sheri Kish, who's our interim director, to, she thanks you as well, in allowing us to talk about the good work of the Department of Technology. I'm joined today by some talented city staff that we have here. We have Nicole Woodward, and she is the manager of the Emerging Applications Section. We have Shere Elhami, who is the manager of GIS citywide. We have Bill White, who is the manager of, well, actually, he is the enterprise architect, and that's enterprise in the technology sense, not necessarily in my old development hat sense, so, that's Bill. We have David Celebresi, who is actually the, with Public Utilities. He's the Columbus Green Spot Coordinator. And then, we also have Andy Staff here as well, who is with CTV. So, before focusing on today's topic, which is the citizen access, I always like to take the opportunity to focus on some of the other work of the Department of Technology. I'll briefly go over some of this information. On a daily basis, the department manages nearly $11 million of city of Columbus technology contracts. Also, we have the responsibility of the development and support of major city of Columbus technology systems, including the revenue generating systems of income tax and also the utilities billing system, 3-1-1, and the building permit system as well. We procure and develop and deploy and support over 10,000 network devices. They include desktop computers, tablets, we have laptop computers, telephones, and mobile devices as well. And also, the management and operation of two data centers storing over 1.8 petabytes, and that's a lot of storage. It's basically the equivalent of 10 billion digital photographs, so that's a lot of storage that we have there, on over 550 servers. We have a nationally recognized and award-winning Geographic Information Systems Team. And then, we also manage the network of over 500 miles of fiber that allows for quick and efficient transfer of data between city facilities and the development of user-friendly and award-winning web and mobile application devices. That's just part of the, our department overview. Now, I'd like to focus some time on one section of the Department of Technology that focuses specifically on citizen access, and that would be CTV. CTV is available on Time Warner Channel 3, also WOW Cable Channel 3, we have U-verse Channel 99, and it's available with live streaming on both columbus.gov/CTV and also the My Columbus app. CTV is actually a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week cable channel that provides local government news and information to the cable and online subscriber. In 2015, they produced close to 300 hours of on-air programming, including meetings of Columbus City Council and the Franklin County Commissioners. And the potential reach of CTV is over 1 million local cable subscribers and an infinite number of online and application or the mobile app, My Columbus users. So, that's CTV. Go ahead.
So, and I apologize, I didn't really lay it out. I was hoping, as we kind of hit each sections, if I could ask some questions that members of the public have asked, and think this is a wonderful forum in which to get those answered.
Absolutely.
So, regarding CTV, some people have asked, particularly the scroll, so I know there's potentially two channels. If a member or an organization of our community was interested in being part of that scroll, what is that process? Is there somewhere they can go? Is it contact the department? Is it contact the Chair of the Committee? Any information you could share if people or businesses want to share some of the community events that they have going on?
That'd be, first of all, those are, that option exists for nonprofit organizations, and that information would appear on CTV's sister channel, which would be the Community Bulletin Board on Channel 21. That's correct, Andy? Great. And basically, what they would need to do then is provide the information, the who, the what, the when, the where, the why, send that in an email to communitybulletinboard@columbus.gov. The Department of Technology is also looking at other ways that the community can actually submit that information as well, so, something that we're looking into right now.
The only other thing, the size of the staff of CTV. I don't think people always get or understand the credit that goes into the work, obviously, when we are able to go out into the community and some of that's captured. Just curious if you could share what the size of the staff currently is?
Sure. And Andy? That's fine, that's fine. Thank you.
Yes, I've never been up here before. The staff is, consists to myself, two full-time writer producers, one full-time engineer, and three part-time people. And that's it.
Information's always helpful. Thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown, do you have any questions on CTV? All right, then we'll keep.
And I want to take this time to thank Andy and the crew of CTV for always, I've been with the city for quite a while now, and I've known Andy from day one, and I think that it's always great to have the people that are behind the scenes come out front and to be recognized and that stuff as well, so.
I know that is always their favorite opportunity, is to come out from behind the scenes. So, thank you and thank your staff.
Absolutely. I'd now like to turn it over to Nicole Woodward, who will discuss some of our web offerings and also the mobile application stuff. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. As Tom mentioned, my name is Nicole Woodward. I manage the Emerging Applications Development Team. I have an amazing staff of five that creates and maintains nearly 50 applications, three of which I'm going to highlight today. We have a large focus on citizen-facing apps within our team and an emphasis on ease of use. We want all the websites to have a similar look and feel for consistency, so we've utilized the city branding, the city color scheme, and some similar templates so that you have the same usability from page to page. We have, we were one of 214 sites out of 6,000 government sites to receive the Sunny Award for Transparency and Accessibility. We are in the top 1% of over 1 billion websites worldwide. We've got nearly 5,000 visitors each day. We've got over 3,300 sites that contain links back to columbus.gov. So, that's other entities that find information on columbus.gov to be valuable enough to include a link back to it. Ohio State is one of those entities. They have a lot of links back to columbus.gov to share that information and get the message out. 41% of our users are accessing columbus.gov from a mobile device. This is important, as more and more people get smartphones, we'll see this number climb. This is important for columbus.gov because we've all been to webpages on our phone where you have to kind of scroll left, right, up, down to see the whole page. You won't have to do that on columbus.gov because we've made it responsive in that the page will rebuild so that you can see the information in a stacked view and then just kind of scroll through it nicely on your phone for an easier user experience. With over 9,000 pages, the columbus.gov website offers a lot of information. Some examples of that are, you can pay your utility bills, you can apply for a parking permit, you can look up your street sweeping schedule, and we can highlight programs such as Get Active and the Columbus Green Spot Program, which Dave is going to talk about here in a minute. At this time, I can take questions about columbus.gov?
So, love the website, really have found it user-friendly as I navigate and get caught up to speed with the city. One question that someone did raise in a community forum was about press releases and whether or not they're made available on the website.
Press releases are available on the website, and we've made them convenient right on the homepage. Actually, you can see on this slide, there's the news and alerts. Press releases are always put in that news section. For added exposure, that news and alert section is also fed up to the My Columbus mobile application, so the exact same information is displayed in two different places to reach our broader audience.
A question, how do, like, the snow removal, do we, do they put the snow removal on the website as well?
Snow removal?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely. Warrior Watch, which Shere is going to talk about here in a minute, is actually highlighted at the bottom of the homepage on columbus.gov, so it's easily accessible via columbus.gov as well as the My Columbus mobile application.
And how frequently do we update it? All this information, how frequently on the website? How often do we do the update?
Oh, it's constantly updated. We have editors in every department that are focused on keeping their information up to date.
Okay.
Okay, with that, we're going to transition over to David. I think you have the clicker. David's one of our business partners and one of our favorite business partners. He's going to talk about Green Spot today.
Thank you, Nicole. Councilmember Brown, Chair Stenziano, thanks for this opportunity to talk about Green Spot, Columbus Green Spot. It's a program that lives at Department of Public Utilities, and its mission is really to inspire, educate, and recognize households, businesses, nonprofits, community groups that adopt sustainable actions. And since the program started in 2008, we have more than 12,000 members, we have more than 2,300 Facebook likes and more than 250 Twitter followers. As I said, it provides a framework to go green. And it's an example, too, of, with the new website and the metrics, interdepartmental collaboration with Department of Technology. With the metrics component now, our members can go online and they can actually track what they're doing to be green, and it'll accumulate over time so they could see their impact. They'll also be able to see the impact they're having in the larger Green Spot universe. So, here, we took feedback from the community and we've incorporated a number of different changes to make the viewer experience, quite frankly, a better experience viewing and navigating the website. At the left-hand side, you'll see a lot of different programs, and those programs in the quick links box, and those programs make up the Columbus Green Spot Program. We also have a carousel at the top that highlights upcoming events, also some large initiatives and some successes, and the homepage does the same thing as well. If you click under the Learn tab, the viewer will see the different options in which somebody can become a member of Green Spot. So, let's go ahead and take a look at the household. So, the household has tips on how to be green, and at the top of the page, it has the benefits of a household being a Green Spot member. And one thing we tried to do on every, on every page, at least have one area where somebody could click "Join Us" or "Become a Member Today" to make it easy for them to join Green Spot. So, with that, let's say we, go ahead and click "Join Us," it's going to take you to this page, and you'll see at the bottom, there's links so the community members and businesses could preview the application. We'll go ahead and, let's say, we click on the household. After you fill out information about address, email, and name, then you have the opportunity to really highlight what you're doing to be green. So, we ask our members to commit to do at least two things, to conserve and protect water, two things to conserve energy, and two things to reduce, reuse, and recycle. And this has something for everybody, whether you're a homeowner or a renter. After you fill out that, after you go through that process, you'll have your own dashboard, and it looks like this. At the top, you can see how many commitments you've made. You can actually change the number of commitments if you'd like. The second section is the number of, or the, where the member could enter in the metrics of what they're doing to be green, and that'll calculate over time. Then, there's this reminder section, Did You Know section, and then finally, but not least at the bottom, there's the number of pledges that our members have made under each of those three categories. And hopefully, by the end of this year, we'll have an additional column there that will calculate the environmental benefits as well as the cost benefits to our members of being Green Spots. So, in closing, these technologies and the upgrade design are essential for communicating our message to the public, and it provides ideas, resources, and a framework for the public to go green. It really is easy being green. Thank you.
So, if you don't mind, I had you have a few questions, similar to most of the department. Until I became a council member, I wasn't aware of some of these things, although, but a lifelong resident. Is Green Spot for Columbus residents only?
Green Spot's actually for anybody, really. Whether you're in Columbus or not in Columbus, we just ask, you know, it's a voluntary program, and we just like getting the word out there to folks to join.
So, in getting that word out, are there any membership goals or, you know, aspirations that the program's trying to achieve, or just get the word out and kind of what's most comfortable for everyone?
There are. So, our goal is to get 2,000 members each year, so we reach 20,000 members by 2020. Certainly, we'd love to exceed that goal, but that's the goal, and we do that through a number of different ways, through being out in the community at various festivals and events, talking to community groups, leading a Green Spot course for businesses, just a lot of different avenues that we get the word out.
And my final question, and having signed up and then talking to Mr. Diamond about not only providing ideas to be green, but what are some of the benefits when you are participating in Green Spot?
Sure. So, for the household, you get a letter from Mayor Ginter, as well as a Green Spot decal that you could put up on your window, and you can let your neighbors know that you're green. It does provide that framework, it provides ideas. We also have the Green Spot Backyard Program that we, that our friends at Franklin Soil and Water Conservation District administer for us, so there's rebates available for household members on native trees, compost bins, native plants, and I always forget the last one. But there's a number of rebates that are out there for our members. For businesses, there's some promotional things that we can do, that we base that on their annual report that they submit. We have a monthly highlight on our Green Spot Facebook page to highlight some of the good works that they're doing. I could probably go on for another hour, but I'll just, I better not.
We're happy you're here. You can take as much time as you want. Don't know if Councilmember Brown has any questions?
You mentioned something about a Green Spot course for business?
Correct.
What does that entail?
Correct. So, each year, we take about six to 10 businesses. We keep the course limited because we want to have interaction with those businesses, and it creates a forum for those businesses to talk to one another about what they've done, to go green, and their successes, as well as their obstacles. One thing that we've found is that, you know, one business might do really well at energy efficiency. Maybe they've taken advantage of some rebate programs and have installed LED lighting, but maybe they're having trouble instituting a recycling policy and they don't know where to start. And there'll be a business in the group that's kind of flipped, so they could talk to one another. And we also bring in experts from the outside to tell them about the different programs that are available for them. And it also gives us an opportunity as a city to let them know of our experience of, for instance, instituting the recycling program or changing out the light bulbs and things like that. Those businesses are then recognized, or we kind of say they graduate from the Green Spot Sustainability Initiative at our Green Spotlight Celebration, which happens in every spring, and they're recognized, the mayor hands them certificates of recognition for their completion of the course. The course meets once a month for six months with that culmination of graduation.
If I want to get rid of a refrigerator, what do I do?
So, to get rid of a refrigerator, I would send you a link to, well, there's a couple things. One, on a Department or the Refuses website, there's this called a Waste Wizard that we just put out there recently, and you could type in, "How do I get rid of a refrigerator?" and it'll generate results of where you can actually do that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't think we have any other questions.
Thank you.
Very helpful and informative.
Thank you, Tom. So, now, we're moving on to the My Columbus mobile application. Several years ago, the city of Columbus set out to create a single mobile application for all city services. So, we decided to create one mobile application to avoid any confusion of downloading multiple applications and then having to remember which app serves what function. So, everything is currently combined into one app. It's available on Android and Apple phones. We've got over 25,000 downloads at this point. The Best Customer App Site Award was given to us in 2014. Site is a company called Consumerization of IT and the Enterprise. It's a subsidiary of IDG, which is International Data Group. They publish magazines such as CIO Magazine, Computer World, and IT World. We've had over 12,500 service requests entered into the 3-1-1 section of My Columbus to date. My Columbus offers several services. One of the most popular services is the Collection Reminders. As we all know, we have a rolling collection schedule for trash, yard waste, and recycling here in Columbus. So, with the app, you can enter your address, and then the night before your collection day, it will pop up a reminder to say, "Don't forget to put out your trash cans or your yard waste or your recycling." This is a favorite feature of a lot of our customers. We've also got something we call the Red Alert Bar. It's not always red, but it's a place to highlight information that's happening in Columbus. We typically save red for emergency or, you know, critical type information, but this is where you would find Warrior Watch, the snow removal, in the winter during, you know, a big snow day. We've also put things on there like school closings and election results. We kind of reserve that for timely information. We've got news and alerts on there as well, but the Red Alert Bar is more so, like I said, for the timely information. The app is then broken down into separate components. We've got the My Neighborhood function, which is intended to show you things available in and around you. It's a, it's a combination of city information as well as public information. So, say, for example, you were looking for a daycare. You could pull up the app in the daycare section and find a daycare in and around you. We've also got things under My Neighborhoods like traffic cams that might help you with your commute home and capital projects. The 3-1-1 Call Center section, we're going to delve into a little bit more in a minute, but you can submit 3-1-1 service requests via the My Columbus mobile application, as well as to view the status of your request. Get Active is another program within the My Columbus mobile application. It's got activities, information in there, how to be active, and there's an art walk program that you can pull up, and it will show you pictures, text, and audio about landmarks and historical sites in Columbus as it walks you through this route around the city. So, there are several different routes that the Health Department has put in there to kind of combine being active with some of the historic landmarks in Columbus. You can also find sports information. If, say, you participate in one of the city's athletic leagues, like, you know, if you have a softball game and you're concerned whether it's rained out, you can find that out on the app as well. The Green Spot application, the Green Spot piece of it, David just talked about, that is also available via the My Columbus mobile application. You can view the information as well as sign up to be a Green Spot member. City Jobs is a section we added in 2015. You can see all the open job postings within the city of Columbus, police, fire, and any of the departmental listings as well. Okay, so, 3-1-1. In this section, I'm going to talk about the 3-1-1 service offerings via the website as well as the mobile application. As far as 3-1-1 itself goes, you can contact 3-1-1 in a variety of ways. You can call, you can visit via the My Columbus mobile app, and you can go to columbus.gov/311. There are 473 types of service requests that the 3-1-1 Call Center will accept. Those are anything from potholes to streetlights to bulk collection. We have found that by including a photo with the service request, in a lot of instances, that service request gets resolved more quickly. We believe this is because the photo includes a lot of information that the person resolving the service request might need. So, for example, graffiti. If you submit a service request about graffiti on a city sign or a building, by including a photo, the person who goes out to resolve that issue can take the right amount of material with them to either cover it up or remove the graffiti. You can also check on a service request. You can look near your current location. If you're going by the mobile app, you can search near a specific address, or you can put in the email address that you may have used to submit your service request to see what the status of it is. These are kind of helpful because if you see a pothole, you might want to look for any service requests around me to see if somebody has already submitted it, so you don't, you know, submit a second one. We also offer something called a knowledge base. This is a list of FAQs, or just facts that the 3-1-1 Call Center has compiled over the years with all the calls that they have resolved. So, it includes links within the city as well as to sites outside the city to answer questions that people might have. There's lots of information in there that was recently made public so people can, you know, empower themselves to go find the information. 3-1-1 has increased in popularity over the years. So, in 2005, we had 135,000 service requests entered via 3-1-1. In 2015, we increased that number to 317,000 service requests. This graph is to depict the top 10 types of service requests that we've seen over the years. Bulk collection is always number one. So, as we were talking about earlier, you know, your refrigerator or, you know, a couch or whatever you might have, baby strollers, Christmas trees, camping tents, all kinds of stuff are picked up via bulk collection. There's over 100 different types of items that are collected via the bulk collection schedule. Code violations are also a big, big number on the top 10. Those are things like weeds, high grass, trash, you know, on a neighbor's property. If you're unhappy with that, you can submit a service request and have the city come out and take a look. Refuse is also on the top 10. If you have a container that maybe has been damaged or needs replaced, you can submit a service request to get that fulfilled. Okay, so, that's kind of it for My Columbus and 3-1-1. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Brown, I'll let you begin any questions you may have. So, I do have a few questions then. You mentioned winning the best customer app by site. Who was the competition for that award?
Absolutely.
How big was that competition?
Okay, thank you for asking. Yes, so, in that category, it wasn't just a government submission, so we competed against private companies for this award. Couple of the examples of the ones in our category were the Hertz Corporation, the car rental company, the Insurance Auto Auctions Incorporated, and Trade Monster Group. We were in good company in general in the competition because NASA, True Value, and DirecTV were also winners of other categories.
So, we can send some council members to space if we figure out our apps correctly. I love on the app, the Collection Reminder. Could you walk through a little bit how residents, once they've downloaded the app, how they get that program, that daily reminder, if they move, if they have to update that kind of information?
Right. So, right on the home screen, there's a collection schedule circle. You can click on that or tap on that, enter your address. There's some other information available, just to make things easier. What we really need in that section is your address. So, if you type in your address, save it, it should show you your collection schedule for trash, recycling, and yard waste. There's also a section where you need to toggle on the alerts. We don't send alerts to people who don't want them, so there is a section where you need to toggle that on. You can toggle it on for just your collection reminders or just for news and alerts.
And, so, the alerts are awesome, and you mentioned it's yard waste, recyclables, trash pickup. I recently had a resident ask about, well, could we get notification for street sweeping? Curious if that's something that would be possible and if that's Curious if that's something that would be possible, and if that's something they take to you, or how we could, if it's possible, execute that.
Right. So we've already been looking into this because this is something that I think would be of value to residents in those areas. So we're currently working on a project together to get that information into a system that can make it available to us. Once that is up and running, we will take that information from them and put it on My Columbus and incorporate into reminders.
That's a wonderful progress report. If businesses or residents have other ideas, things they'd like to see added to the app, or things that would be helpful, what suggestions would you have in terms of expressing that? Again, going through the Chair of the Department, going through the Department, what's the best way for them to be able to express that? And again, just like street sweeping, kind of that light bulb goes off of, maybe this isn't a bad idea.
Yeah. I really appreciate you asking that question because we tried to make the app provide the services that the citizens want. It's difficult to reach out to every citizen in the city of Columbus. We have done surveys and what have you. There is a feedback option right on the homepage to where you can submit an email that comes directly to me. I have an ongoing list of enhancement requests, and I will take that request and add it to the list.
And one last question. So we talked a little about 3-1-1. Just to be clear, if there is a 3-1-1 phone app, the Department of Technology is not the department that is going to be resolving those cases. When I started and learned a little bit more about 3-1-1, I think it was always assumed, I call 3-1-1, they're the ones who are closing it out. Just to clarify, it's not the Department of Technology, even though it comes through the app, that will be executing, closing, or addressing the photo that's provided or the issue, but it's actually shared with other departments who then have someone responsible.
Absolutely. So each service request gets evaluated and then put in a queue for whichever department is responsible for resolving that request. So we are, you know, providing the technology, but public service is monitoring the service requests and putting them in the queues.
Thank you.
That's also applicable for public safety. When they could request, they forward it onto public safety, then they respond and keep everybody up to speed on that. Along those same lines, Tom, a question. You mentioned fiber earlier. Where exactly are we with regard to fiber throughout the entire city? I know you've mentioned like 500 miles or something like that. But through all the different public safety facilities, as well as other city facilities, do we have fiber everywhere, or are we still working to get that accomplished?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Brown. We actually will be talking about that later. Shurei actually has some maps that will illustrate where the fiber network is currently.
Thank you.
But I appreciate the question.
Great question. It's something a lot of residents have been asking about, and so I asked if they could include it. So if it's not answered in the presentation, we'll come back and answer it.
It'll be fine.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. I think we're ready for GIS?
Absolutely. And I'd like to turn it over to Shurei, who will actually be talking about GIS and some more offerings as well. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Chair Stenziano and Councilmember Brown. Thank you very much for this opportunity. As Tom mentioned, my name is Shurei Elhami. I'm the citywide GIS manager. Along with me, my team are responsible for 38 applications, either directly or indirectly. These are all GIS applications. And in case you're wondering what geographic information system means, it's basically a technology that at any given time, if you grab your phone, look up for an address, or look for finding out how to get from point A to point B, or maybe you're looking for a restaurant nearby, or looking for an apartment to rent, and you're sitting on a map of some sort, in the backend, you're using GIS technology. So at the city of, in city of Columbus, that is not all that we do with GIS. We do all that and a lot more. So when I was putting this together, I decided to just select a few of the applications and share those with you. One of them that is very much related to what Nicole just talked about is visualizing those 3-1-1 service requests. When those requests come in, they go to this application that we call it 3-1-1 Service Request Heat Map. And when you look at this map, the darker the areas, the larger the concentration of the service requests, and the lighter areas, of course, are less concentration. What you can do when you get to this application is that you can type in your address, and then zoom into the area. And what that allows you is not only to make sure that the service request is actually placed in the right location, but also get answered to some of the earlier questions that you had, as in, who is it that is going to take care of this problem? Because you can see the name of the department. And more importantly, you can find out the status of the service request, whether it is closed or open. Some other GIS applications that we have provides other type of information, such as zoning. This is an example of that application. We are in the process of actually modernizing this app, but for now, the application that you see before you allows you to, once again, type your address, or put your owner's name, your own name, or whomever else. And again, after you zoomed in to an area, you can turn on the zoning application and learn more about that type of information. You may also be in your neighborhood, very interested in demographic data. We have a variety of demographic information, say that in a neighborhood, you're interested in learning about the number of senior citizens. And not only at the time, and this is an example of many that we have and I just chose, if you're interested to know how many people over 65 live in a neighborhood, and not only for that particular year, but throughout the years, how the trend has been changed, you can use GIS very effectively to pinpoint those types of information. Another example that I wanted to share with you, and you touched on briefly early on, is the snow and ice tracking application, or as we call Warrior Watch. Warrior Watch is available to you from columbus.gov/warriorwatch, and of course, we use it during wintertime. The primary purpose of the application, or the two questions that, when it was designed, was supposed to answer were in twofolds. The first question was, "Has my street been treated?" And by "treated," it was meant either plowed or brined. So the first image that you see before you, it's basically showing four different time intervals. And by looking up your address again, and looking, and going to your neighborhood, you can find out when the city trucks, snowplows have been in your neighborhood in the past 72 hours. The second question that the application is designed to answer is the priority of your street segments. The city's priorities are divided in three, and of course, if you have your lucky TV on Priority 1, your street will be plowed first, and then Priority 2 and Priority 3. So this application was launched in 2014. As I was putting these slides together, I picked up six snow events of the past two snow seasons to show you how popular this website has been, especially when you have very large snowfalls. And the largest snowfall actually is on the bottom, in November of 2014, when over 10,000 visitors hit the website on one single day. So obviously, this year, we've been lucky, in my opinion, since we don't have any ski resorts here. We didn't get as much snow, but in last year, we certainly got quite a bit of snow, and especially in November of 2014. If you're interested in any of these web GIS applications, you can go to our GIS homepage, columbus.gov/GIS, and there you will actually find what we call a GIS portal. This is work in progress. We're putting a lot of time into getting a lot of different departments' applications into their own, into their own space or folder, if you will. And basically, one of them is Department of Technology, which is the first one to your left, and one of the examples of the web maps in there is the fiber network, which was mentioned earlier on. And just a few words about our fiber network and infrastructure, I thought I'll just put the goals of the fiber infrastructure, which is in four folds. And one of the goals of the, of putting this extensive infrastructure in place for city of Columbus was to enhance economic development opportunities for city of Columbus, but also serve the city-owned buildings, specifically recreation centers, and also on the public safety side, serve fire station and police stations alike. And of course, last but not least, bridging the digital divide by provision of fiber throughout the city. The next one answers your question, Councilmember Brown, earlier on, as in, what is the coverage of the fiber for city of Columbus? This is the current, the red lines throughout the city are the current fiber lines, but of course, Phase D, which is coming up soon, is going to close the loop on 270, and that is the continuation of Columbus Traffic Signal System, or CTSS. Our fiber GIS database is one of the most sophisticated and complex GIS systems for fiber infrastructure actually in the nation, because of the level of detail that is put in place in this database. At this point, as I mentioned, we have a lot more applications, but I will stop, and I'll be glad to ask, to answer any questions that you might have. Absolutely. I'll pass it to Tom also, too. It was about cameras and relationship to fiber, where the fiber is located, with cameras, body cameras.
I'm sorry. Tom, what I was asking was that when there is an expansion, right now, we're talking about putting more cameras up, the community cameras, and making certain that the areas where those cameras are going to go is based upon the demands by the communities. That doesn't necessarily mean that there's fiber there, and whether or not they all touch base together. The DOT, the Community and Public Safety, for where we're placing cameras, that, would that be an accurate assessment?
That is correct. I mean, the different, like, Department of Public Safety would then work with those communities to make sure that they're aware of the cameras being in place. And I do know that one of the things, like, for our fiber network, the first priority of the network is to work for anticipated needs. Any needs of the city of Columbus would then be the first priority of that network.
And as I understand, we're building, obviously, we have in the plans a new fire station out on Wagner Road, and I assume that we have the fiber going out that far on the east side of the city?
If it's not there now, the, you know, obviously, that would be in the plan, to get all city facilities connected.
Thank you.
You mentioned the zoning app, and that we're working on modernizing it. And when I got to take a tour of the department, I got to see a little preview, and I was pretty excited by all the features and the hard work that's gone into it. Just curious when that may be rolled out, what that timeline would be, because I think it's something residents and businesses will really be impressed by.
Thank you very much for bringing it up. Actually, this morning, I was presenting that application, a similar application that is internal to the Cabinet, and I got the same sentiments as yours. We're working with our building and zoning department at this point on this new application. And the first series of feedback, we've received it, and we are working on addressing those. And I'm very much hopeful that within the next two months, we will launch the application, and I will make sure that you will hear about that.
I ask Mr. Diamond every time I see him, almost, "How is it going, and what's the update?" Because, and that was a few months ago. It's pretty sharp, and something I really think your staff should be complimented.
Thank you.
A lot of good information, and I think something residents are really going to enjoy. On fiber, and I don't know if you mentioned it, but the map is helpful. How much, many miles of fiber does the city own? And is there a strategic plan for adding more? I know development uses it strategically as a tool, but that's something I consistently is, "What's going on with fiber? What's going on with fiber?" You showed the map, but just curious, what's going on with fiber?
Yeah, the 500 miles, which was mentioned in the slide, is the approximate mileage of the current fiber, and there is a plan, and that really the manager, the fiber manager who's not here, Bill Rogers, can answer those questions in detail. And we can get back with you with more details, but it is definitely expanding, and, but one figure that I've seen is putting about 600 miles by the end of 2016.
I appreciate that, and I really appreciate the map. I've had some community members come up and ask, "We want fiber in this corridor." And I said, "Have you seen the map before?" And they said, "I didn't know it exists, and that's wonderful that it actually is here." Now they want to go back and engage how to maximize that. Don't know if you have any additional follow-up, Councilmember Brown? Appreciate the presentation. Really looking forward to that zoning app rollout in the next couple of months. Not that I'm holding you to that.
Thank you very much.
But when it's ready. Finally, would like to introduce Mr. White, who worked hard on the security issues. I think we always hear with technology, data, concerns, pain, you know, we want to encourage people to take advantage, and the security component is so important. And really appreciate you being here, and looking forward to your comments and presentation.
Thank you, Chair Stenziano, Councilmember Brown. I am here to talk about our information security program, and the things that the city is doing in order to protect the citizens and the data. One of the services that we offer on our website is the ability to accept credit card payments. In order to accept credit card payments online and process payments, we are actually subject to the payment card industry data security standard. It's a rigorous, a rigorous set of security controls that we are evaluated against annually, and it is only one of the legal and regulatory requirements that fall on the city of Columbus and our information security program. Together, these, these, these external requirements and our internal frameworks of best practices amount to hundreds of individual security controls that we're carrying out and monitoring on an annual basis. These controls include things like reviewing security policy and procedures to make sure that they're staying up to date with our current threats and our current technologies, ensuring that people are, receive the appropriate awareness and training for security, so that they understand the threats that are out there in terms of phishing emails and dangerous websites. Additionally, we perform risk assessments, and then we have a suite of security tools that we use. Some of the tools are protective, where we can block known bad or known unnecessary information, such as the firewall. And then some of the technologies that we have are detective technologies, where we're detecting suspicious behavior. And when we do detect suspicious behavior, we've got an information security response plan, and we respond according to that plan in order to address whatever issue there may be. All these activities are carried out by a team that's dedicated to ensuring that the citizens can access the digital services that we've discussed here today with high confidence.
It was really eye-opening when I came out and met with some of your team, just how often there are threats, or just kind of that every day, you see something suspicious, and being up to speed, ready to react. Is there anything as public, members of the public, we could be doing to be aware of potential threats, or understand more that things are going on? I know it's a delicate balance between security and providing that to the public at large, but just how we stay informed of?
The, there's a site called Stop Think Connect that is out there for public consumption that has a lot of tips and guidelines for, for the public on making sure that they use strong passwords, and that they have sensible security controls, that they have antivirus on their computers, and different things like that. With the city, we have several sources of threat intelligence that we monitor, and one of the associations that we're members of is called the Multi-State Information Sharing and Analysis Center. And it's a group of all 50 states, as well as many cities across the country, that get together on a monthly basis, and we discuss, the MSISEC itself has threat intelligence, which they'll present, and then we discuss issues that are happening in different areas around the country. They'll also keep a threat level, so that we understand when the MSISEC raises the threat level, there are things that we need to do and pay attention to. Other things that we do as a city is just making sure that we're applying patches to our software and keeping them up to date, so that we are closing any vulnerabilities that are in the environment.
Thank you. Councilmember Mitch Brown?
Bill, what about redundancies? How, why don't you speak to that issue for a moment?
Absolutely. A key piece of data security is business continuity and protecting data. So we have, we have a business continuity plan, our departments have business continuity plans in place to ensure that if there's a disruption of IT services, that they can continue, they continue with their job until we can restore, restore their IT services. We have multiple ways that we address. We have multiple ways that we address redundancy in the IT services. We have multiple data centers. So in the event of a disaster at one data center, we can shift over to the other data center. If it's not that level of a disaster, we've got backups and we can recover and restore from backups. So absolutely securing copies of data and in, depending on the criticality of the system, having actual redundancy built into the system is essential and we're doing that.
Thank you. To all the security questions I have, Mr. Diamond, if you want to take us home, I know we've covered a lot.
Well, first, on behalf of everybody at the Department of Technology, we appreciate you taking the time and scheduling the hearing today and actually asking some of the great questions.
So one more question. What is the future of the Department of Technology?
A new director.
Well.
Absolutely.
The extent of that, we talked, there is an interim director. Is there a timeline? What that process potentially looks like?
Currently, from what I understand, I don't know for sure, but they are in the process of interviewing different directors, you know? So we anticipate within six weeks, we would think that we would have a new director, but again.
I appreciate that information.
Absolutely, absolutely. And the future is very bright. The future is very bright for the Department of Technologies.
Their sunglasses floating around the city hall to that extent is my understanding. To that end, we are now open up for the public comment or question portion. My staff has told me there's been no speaker slips. I don't know if anyone in the audience was planning or would like to ask any questions?
If I may, I do want to ask Bill one more question. Bill, maybe you can speak to the issue about us expanding on servers for law enforcement with their body worn cameras. The question is going to come up and somebody needs to be prepared to answer it.
We have a team of people right now that are addressing, you know, trying to determine as accurately as possible what the requirements for the system would be in terms of capacity of storage, capacity of bandwidth, the access controls. And we're looking at it from every angle and trying to make the most accurate estimates about what those capacity requirements are. Obviously, you know, we will build in a small margin for error, but part of the plan is to ensure that we don't come out of the gates with a bottleneck.
And if I'm not mistaken, again, the sheer volume of footage may be significant, so we have to be prepared, at least in the beginning stages, for implementation of the BWC program.
Absolutely. The collection and storage and access to the information all needs to be assessed very carefully to ensure that we get the best possible system.
Have you looked at any other cities at all who already have body worn cameras and what they're doing with regards to storage? From what I understand, the numbers are significantly high.
They are. It is. It's IT, the numbers within IT continue to rise and rise and rise. And, you know, as we move forward and the Internet of Things evolves into a reality where people are now putting sensors out there and cameras are a form of a sensor and they expect these sensors to be able to communicate back to a data center somewhere to be stored and analyzed. Cameras are special in that the actual images themselves take up more space than most sensors. And these are problems that DOT is continually trying to stay on the forefront of and understand what's coming next while we, you know, continue to operate and keep services going the way they are today. We try to keep that eye into the future and make sure that we're planning appropriately.
And to my knowledge, you guys are doing a real super job. From my previous experience, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Since I didn't see anyone jump up for any questions, I'll just move on to closing remarks. Really want to thank everyone that took the time to attend today and those that are taking the time to watch the hearing at home. Also like to take time to thank the Department of Technology staff. Really appreciate your all's presentation. And especially Assistant Director Tom Diamond for his participation, presentation and kind of keeping me on task and in the direction and allowing us to have this wonderful hearing. The information's always been very helpful for a department I didn't know a lot about before when I started in January. Really have been impressed by the dedication caliber of not only working with so many of the other departments, but providing a service that our residents can and should be proud of. I encourage those looking for more information to visit the Department of Technology website at www.columbus.gov/technology or call 614-645-2550. You can also always call my office at 614-645-0884 or email me at msstenziano@columbus.gov with any additional questions. Also want to thank my staff, Kevin McCain and Stephanie Magus, for their help in having this wonderful hearing today. Thank you all and this hearing is adjourned.